Would you call the roll, please?
Laura Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Cavan.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve amendments of the regular city council meeting held September 2nd, 2014. Item B, receive the minutes of the planning commission meeting held July 8th, 2014. Item C, amend the community development block grant sub-recipient agreements for aging services. Bethesda, more youth and family services, success by six, smart start, and metro fair housing to include required federal regulations and assurances. Item D, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $2,158,352 one cent.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is receive a report from Select Actuarial Services and accept the annual actuarial report for fiscal year June 30th, 2014.
Mayor and Council, Laura Kraus with Select Actuarial Services is here to present the annual report summary, and each one of you should have a handout. It has the presentation. Anyway, she's going to go through that. If you have any questions, she'll be asked.
Good evening. It's good to be back in the water and to see how the city's growing and all the reconstruction. And I just appreciate everything back in the year. Just to briefly go through this, this is a brief presentation, hitting the highlights of the report that we did that I think you could supply a copy of. But the purpose of our study, of our engagement each year is to provide the city with an evaluation at fiscal year end for your retained liabilities, for your self-insured health benefits, workers' compensation, and the auto and general liability exposures that you have. And this keeps your supplies from the GASV10 standard. It just says you're going to carry this reserve for all the claims that have happened as of the fiscal year end. So, page three, the two main objectives are to provide an analysis of the required reserves as of June 30th, 2014, to fund all outstanding losses from the historical years, and then to provide a forecast for the next, the current and the next budget year. Page four shows the total required reserves for all of these lines together is $2,187,000. That is made up primarily of workers' compensation claims, which tend to stay open for a long period of time. Some of them can stay open for 10 or 20 years. But the total reserve for workers' comp is $1,525,000. The next largest piece of that is the health insurance, which those claims do pay out quicker, but in reserve, a requirement for $491,000. Other liability claims, auto and GL claims, $131,000, and there's an open tort liability claim for $40,000. Compared to last year, your results are fairly stable. We do have an increase this year over the reserve need as of the end of 2013. You can see the comparisons there for each piece. The total in 2013 was $1,866,000, and now, as I said, it's $2,187,000. And primarily, you'll see the increases in workers' comp, slight increase in health. Overall, the health, the cost for the 13, 14 year that were just completed were a little less than we had originally forecast for your budget, so they came in less than the budget. And so, we've reduced our estimate. There are still open claims on previous fiscal year end, but we were able to reduce our estimate on that. And the 12, 13 year is now completed, and it was also lower than expected by about $159,000. So, that's good news when people are healthy and the claims don't cost as much as the budget. For workers' compensation, that is where we had an increase in costs over what we expected, and this is all on historical claims. There was one claim that is a larger claim that is expected to exceed the self-insured retention, and the retention is in effect for the year that the claim occurred, which is 2005. So, that claim, when it, when you pay $350,000, that'll end the city's liability on that particular claim. So, that was the primary reason for the increase. There were decreases on other loss periods that had an offsetting effect for that claim, but still, workers' compensation costs were increased slightly. For liability, it's a smaller piece, and overall, there was a net decrease of $38,000 or about 40 percent. And for all the recent years, experience is looking good and tracking below what we would expect. Looking forward to the budget, we provide you an estimate of the costs associated with claims that occur during the 14, 15 fiscal year. Some of those you'll pay out during this same year, and some will pay in the future, and you budget for them all during the year. The total budget for this year is $4,893,000, and that is primarily for health claims, which make up $4,260,000. Workers' comp claims, the cost of that is $531,000 for this coming year, and liability $102,000. And the next couple of slides just show how these projections have changed a little since last year. Compared to last year's actuarial study, when we did a two-year projection, so comparing the same year, the total forecast of $4,260 is a little lower than what we had projected in the prior report, and that's because, although there's a few less employees that we counted, but also the monthly cost per employee that we estimated is lower. So, that's a little good thing there. And then, we projected the 15, 16 costs, again, just added a few additional employees and some inflation on the monthly cost per employee to get an estimate of $4,959 for the 15, 16 year. For workers' comp, on page 10 now, again, the rate for 14, 15, well, the total forecast is $531,000. That's based on a rate of $25.52 per $1,000 of payroll. That is considerably less than the rate that we selected last year, about 18 percent lower. And about 5 percent of that decrease is due to your good experience with claims, and the rest is due to the expected reduction due to the workers' comp reforms. So, that is based on the NCCI there, analysis of what they expect the workers' comp costs to do as a result of the law. So, we'll be watching it to see if that is your experience as well, but that's what we built into your forecast for workers' comp. And then, for auto liability and general liability combined, and the rate is slightly lower, but pretty stable, and the total forecast of $102,000 is very close to what we projected last year. And the last page on, or the summary on page 12, just sums up all these numbers that I've given you tonight, the reserves in the first column again, or the liability that you have under books now as of June 30th, 14, and then the forecasts are budget numbers for 14, 15, 16. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Okay, with all those numbers, how are we doing?
You're doing well.
Okay.
Doing very well.
Anybody want to make a motion to accept the actuarial study?
No big sir.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote if there's no other discussion?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you, Laura. Item number four is consider the final plat for Plaza Terrace Section 1, a replat of Bonnie Bray Edition Block 11 through 15 located in the southeast quarter of Section 22 Township 10 North Range 3 West, being north of Southwest 19th Street and west of Telephone Road, application by Bonnie Bray LLC, Jay Evans. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. This is in Ward 3.
Mayor and Council, this property was zoned R3 as a PUD. This is a redevelopment project that is resulting from the Bay of 20th, 23rd, and tornado. The overall project consists of a series of duplexes, triplexes, and fiveplexes on a total of 12.5 acres. That results in a maximum density of 10 dwelling units per acre. The first phase of development consists of 18 duplex lots on the north and west boundaries of the development, adjacent to single-family residential homes. The applicant will be utilizing the existing pellet streets, fire lines, and sewer lines on the north and west boundaries. The applicant in the future will be responsible for extending pellet sewer lines to the interior lots. That's not included in Phase 1, but including the future phases. There is no FEMA flood plane located on the site, and being a redevelopment project, stormwater retention is not required. The applicant is currently in the process of vacating the existing flat of Bonnie Bray Edition, blocks 11 through 15. Through the vacation process, the existing easements that are located on these lots will be removed, and the replat will establish a typical easement along the rear property line of 15 feet. This will create more usable lot area for construction of the duplexes. They will include modern amenities such as garages. Staff recommends approval of this application. If you have any questions, welcome.
Okay, first question I have is, how come rezoning an existing lot that was already zoned had these same things on it?
Well, this action is actually a final plat, so the rezoning action took place, I think it was maybe several months after the tornado. And these were reset, they were originally zoned for duplexes, but they were non-conforming lots.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, the original duplexes were not, they were all non-conforming lots.
Second question is, are they going to be nicer than the last ones?
Yes, undoubtedly.
Okay.
Well, and I may have missed it, but compliance with PUD number 906 was?
PUD number 906 is the PUD rezoning action that it was approved under back in 2013. So, it had specified very specific requirements for the building's elevations, layout, design. So, as we get those building permits in, we'll be reviewing those against the PUD application.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. That motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavan.
Upstain.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a contract with Cardinal Engineering to provide engineering plans and services for extending Southwest 11th Street to Plaza Towers Elementary School in the amount of $24,130 to be funded through the CDBG-DR program.
Mayor and Council, you may recall several months ago, we approved a contract with Cardinal Engineering to prepare an infrastructure recovery implementation plan for the tornado area. This is the first project that is coming out of that plan. We're still in the very early stages, still collecting a lot of data to do our assessments. However, this was one project that had been identified barely, very early on as a priority in order to improve circulation and access around the Plaza Towers Elementary. So, in order for this project to move forward and for the project to be complete, ready to be used by the next school year, it's important for us to start the engineering now. So, this contract will do that, and again, our target is to have this completely done and ready for the kids and parents by the next four years, if not sooner.
Now, I assume that when we do these, it's going to be funded from the HUD funds? The HUD has already pre-approved it?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Just to make sure everybody's aware, this is extending 10th Street that's on the north side of the school, west over towards Penn Lane to tie in the neighborhood that's on the west side of the creek over there, which we think is very critical for that whole area to redevelop and to give better access to the school and all that. So, that's what it is, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider authorizing staff to solicit requests for proposals for an update to the city's comprehensive land use plan, citywide master drainage plan, and citywide master water plan to be funded through the CDBGR-DR program.
Mayor and Council, these are three plans that we have been talking about for some time, and I think it's time to move forward and start to collect some, or get some interested firms in here to do interviews. These are all projects that are planning related. They are for the general benefit of the community, and the CDBGR program will pay for these plans. We have, a couple of these plans have always been on our radar, but we've never had a dedicated funding source, and so, this can fill in that gap. We would ask that you allow us permission to go out to request for proposals for these three items and start that process.
Are we going to do them separate or together?
Right now, we have them as separate.
Okay, because I would think the drainage plan would be different from the land use plan.
Yes, they all work together, but they are all separate enough. Some of them require more engineering skills, some of them require more of a planning nature. We do expect all of these consultants, that they're not packaged together, to at least work together because one plan will inform the other.
I think as the city continues to grow and we have smaller lots to develop, this is going to be very important to us because, as we've seen lately, people get upset about a lot of different little things.
Just out of the swamp, there, it'll be funded in citywide, but CDBG, DR, just to be able to follow you outside of the legislature.
Yes, we have verified that. The planning portion of the DR funds are allowed to be spent for plans that just have a general benefit to the community in any way.
That's going to be great. Do you have a motion?
May to approve.
All right, thanks.
Second.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider approval resolution number 80514, adopting the 2013 Disaster Recovery Second Allocation Action Plan for Community Development Lot Grant Program, budget for the 2013 disaster, and authorizing the mayor to submit the plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Mayor and Council, this is the City of Moore's response in reference to the federal register notice. We're proposing in the plan to be funded public facilities at $2 million, infrastructure of $15 million, resiliency of $3,720,000, administration $1,295,000, and planning $3,885,000, which brings us over to the awarded amount of $25.9 million. Also, in the federal register notice, a comprehensive risk analysis was called out. The city has worked with the contractor or engineer and had come up with a comprehensive risk analysis that we're going to include and submit to. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So, this is really our plan for spending that person, but it's awarded, and this is our official response to?
This is our official response.
On second allocation.
The second allocation.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider awarding RFP number 1415002, Internal Audit for Community Development Lot Grant Disaster Recovery to a form in an amount not to exceed $65,000 for FY 2015 to be funded through the CDBGR-DR program.
Mayor and Council, as you know, following the major tornadoes of 2013, the city was awarded two very large grants. As a part of this, at HUD's recommendation and our desire, we submitted proposals for an internal audit. This internal audit firm will do several things. Primarily, what they will do is assist us with the quarterly reporting that has to be done for these grants. They will assess our internal controls, they'll review laws and procedures to ensure that we're complying with the requirements of the HUD Disaster Recovery Funds. The city has much experience with FEMA Disaster Recovery Funds, but we have virtually no experience with HUD Disaster Recovery Funds. So, we believe that we need to hire this firm, or a internal audit firm, to assist us with that that has experience and know-how in dealing with these funds. So, with that, we recommend that you approve an agreement with form CPAs to serve as our internal audit function for the HUD Disaster Recovery Funds. When I saw this, I called Steve and I said, okay, what's the deal? This is twice the amount that we pay our auditing firm to audit the entire city, and he said it's required by HUD in order to get the money, so it's a federal project deal. Well, another part of it is they're
And they pay for it. How stupid.
We're going to do a quarterly audit versus an annual audit, so they're going to spend considerable time here, and this is just a very large grant, and there's much to review and assess.
Oh, I understand, but that's a lot of money for an audit.
It is, and coincidentally, it's about the lowest bid that we received. Some of the other bids were considerably higher.
Yes.
They were frighteningly high. But this one, I believe we need this, and it's important that we get them on board as quickly as possible.
That's how we get those $290 hammers.
Make a motion.
We don't get any, too.
I know, we don't have any. But if we got one from the federal government, it'd cost more than that.
Second.
Thanks. Appreciate it. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? If not, would you call for the vote?
Thanks.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavan.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number nine is consider approval of the interlocal agreement with the City of Oklahoma City for a housing rehabilitation program to be funded through the CDBGR-DR program.
Mayor and Council, this is a housing rehabilitation program that the city will offer. The City of Moore has never taken on such a project, so we're, with this interlocal agreement approved, we're going to team up with the City of Oklahoma City that has experienced it for over 20 years. And the interlocal agreement, it says, we're, the City of Moore will do all the marketing for the program, do client intake reviews, income qualify the person, and then hand the packet over to the City of Oklahoma City. The City of Oklahoma City will do environmental clearance, work write-ups, and prepare a bid for the homeowner. And then, at that point, it'll be turned back over to the City of Moore.
Okay, I have a question. Okay, this, we're housing rehabilitation. What are we going to do exactly? Like, if there, you say if a citizen has a house that needs to be rehabilitated, what are the processes and what qualifies for rehabilitated house?
Well, it's anything up to 51% damage.
Okay.
So, if it's 51% or over, then they're disqualified right then.
Okay.
Keep in mind also, this is storm, storm-related only.
Okay, and what is it that the Red Cross and United Way, are there people out there that don't qualify for Red Cross and United Way yet that haven't rebuilt?
What I was going to say is, the Oklahoma Disaster Recovery Project, which is Red Cross and other agencies, as well as other nonprofits, are providing similar services to this, providing help for people with renovating or rehabilitating their homes after the storm. So, at this point, I think we can say that we don't know for sure
If we, if we
If we have a need for it, but we, we need to see to
Make sure everybody's covered.
And we'll, we'll put out information to the public. If you need help and haven't gotten help rehabilitating your home. Now, there's income requirements.
Yes.
There's, there's quite a bit of paperwork and that sort of thing under the HUD program that they have to go through to be able to qualify. So, there may be some people out there that haven't gotten help otherwise. We don't think there's probably a lot. We may have a few, we may not have any, we may have quite a few. We don't know for sure yet, but it's something we feel like that we need to offer, provide out there to the citizens. I think HUD expects us to do that as well. But there are, there is still a lot of help out there for folks.
Okay, well, have any of you guys been called by anybody? I mean, that's usually the first calls out, yeah? They hadn't been, mine is curious, but yeah, okay, if there's somebody out there, we definitely want to help them.
Our approach is going to be to market it for about three months and get the application and just see where we're at at that point.
What's the benefit with the joint endeavor with Oklahoma City for us?
The City of Oklahoma City has the certified rehab inspectors. We don't have the certified rehab inspectors. We don't have the certified rehab inspectors, and they can do the HUD rehab bidding certifications, and we're not the people who'll do it at this time.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this, all right?
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, he's, he's already approved, we got a second.
Okay.
They were fast.
Yeah.
I'll have a second.
Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider approval of an online citizen participation service agreement with Gran, uh, I'm not sure how you say that.
Granicus.
Granicus, to provide online, online citizen participation tools in the amount of $400 per month to be funded through the CDBG-DR program.
Mayor Council, with CDBG-DR and normal CDBG requires a lot of citizen participation, and we want to reach out to the community that may not come to the public meetings that we have. So this is add to our public meetings. We will also offer online participation, and this will get the different groups engaged with city involvement. During the selection process, we reviewed five companies, and Granicus is the one we recommend to you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I would just, I'd make a motion to approve, and I would say this is an excellent opportunity for people in our community to want to be involved, have our community to have a voice when these come online or in the CDBG meetings. Let's hear what I'm saying, this, this city staff, Jared, I really appreciate the input that the citizens give us to make sure that we're doing the right thing. I think it'd be good.
We also think there's probably some other instances that we may be able to use it out there in the community to get, just get input on things, or maybe even the park naming deal that we've talked about, about putting that out there, which one's your favorite, that sort of thing. So it, it'll allow people that may not come to a meeting to, to get online and, and interact with us.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Please, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay, thanks for having a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is discuss and consider potential acquisition of certain real property located near Southwest 19th and Telephone Road and authorize staff to proceed with said acquisition.
Mayor Council, this is, will be the City of Moore's response to HUD's request to replace housing from the 2013 disaster. This will be the north section, north 14 acres of the old trailer park, for the city to acquire this, and then we will start to the master planning process of this 14.4 acres and then build out for, for developers to develop what the city requests.
This is the, this is a redevelopment component of the HUD CDBG-DR funds that will help satisfy or will satisfy ultimately the housing component of community development block grant funds. This is the project that we've talked to you a little bit about before, but this is the public approval of that process to begin to take the steps to acquire under the HUD requirements these funds to do a redevelopment housing project on this property.
Well, I know the mayor has the funds for this area, and I just wonder if in this redevelopment project, we could call that Lewis Acres or something like that.
Was this stock?
I think we can call it anything we want.
Yeah, thanks, yeah.
Once we get there, but we think this will benefit that area to get new housing. The housing will be a combination, make sure I'm saying this correctly, Jared, but it'll be a combination of housing for moderate, low moderate income folks, as well as market rate units. The city will be able to, to direct and dictate elevations, the kind of housing that it'll be, location, landscaping requirements, all of that through a proposal process that will come at a later date. But there's a significant amount of hoops we have to go through with regard to acquiring the property now, but this will all be done with the, the phase one allocation of the CDBG-DR funds.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the more public works authority meeting. Item number 12 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more public works authority meeting held September 2nd, 2014. Item B, ratify actions of the city council on acceptance of the annual actuarial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. Item C is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $84,746.42.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you both. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Excuse me. Item number 13 is consider authorizing staff to negotiate with the city's current agents for the 2015 insurance policies for property and contents, excess public officials and employment practices liability, and excess workers' compensation.
Mayor Trustees, we need to start working on a 2015 insurance renewal. Staff recommends that the MPWA trustees authorize the staff to negotiate with the current insurance agents and will receive quotes for the policies listed. This is a process that we've used for certain years.
I make a motion to approve this.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Epstein.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more public works authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting. Item number 14 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held September 2nd, 2014. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $204,564.87.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Second, thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting.
Item 15 is the roll call. Would you call real quick?
Robert, Robert Kraus. Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
Item 16 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular more economic development authority meeting held August 18th, 2014. Your motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item number 17, let the record reflect that all, all the members that were here before are still present. Item 17, item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We don't have anyone signed up, but anyone like to speak? Okay, item B, items from the city councilor trustees. Man, it's quiet. Okay, item C, any items from the city manager?
Just a couple, Mayor, yes, sir. Reminder for you all of the meeting next, Monday night at 6:30 to do with Brooklyn Heights. That'll be a study session, that'll be upstairs. Also, reminder for you all, tomorrow at 2:00 PM at the new wastewater treatment plant, if you can be there, we'd very much appreciate that. We're going to have quite a few officials from our state regulatory and funding agencies, the DEQ and OWRB will be there, and I think it's going to be a, a nice event. So just again, reminder of that. Also, just wanted to make a comment for the public out there. We've got a number of people out there that are waiting on reimbursements from us for their storm shelter that they've installed under our storm shelter rebate program. Just would ask folks to be patient, we're expecting a disbursement from our funder for those very soon, so I know there's been some people waiting for a month or so now, but we apologize for that, but we have to wait till our funder funds us, so. Also, Chief, we would like to introduce another one of our younger police officers to you all.
Guys, Officer Ben Gaddy, and he's with us tonight for council security. He's been to the department for about a year. He came to us from the Springfield, Missouri Police Department, where he's worked there for about three years. He has a, he's got his degree in psychology somewhere in Florida, University of Florida, to life as a senior student. Came back to the law. One. But he's married, yeah, been married about six years, so he works on our evening shift, and did a good job for having that. Appreciate the work he did.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second.
I just wanted to mention to you all that we did get our shooting simulator in, and it's up and running, so we'll be trying to reach out to you guys and see when you might want to come over, take a look, and maybe participate in a demonstration on that. Pretty realistic.
It's pretty awesome.
Pretty realistic, yeah.
You've got to go see it.
If you have any heart issues or anything, let us know. If you'd like to sign with it.
There's a thing that'll shock you, shock if you don't do it right, so turn the shocker off. We might leave it on for some of them, but-
If you get hit, you'll know.
For Mark, we'll leave the shocker on for Mark.
One more item that I was asked about, and this is something that's in the works, and that's a body of work with cameras. We are working on that, we're in the testing process right now. We will be coming to you in the near future about that, and it's something that we are going to, but there's some things we have to work out policy-wise and the kind of camera that we want and those kinds of things, but we are working on that. So if anybody has any questions about that, just let me know.
We're not, we're not asking for any armored vehicles, are we? Getting a lot of calls on that. So do we need one?
We talked about that, too.
Okay. Okay. All right, thanks, Steve.
Mayor, just real quick, I meant, I meant this is more of your business, a new sign without-
Luigi's.
What is Luigi's?
It's an Italian restaurant. It's going to open up in a couple of weeks. They are, it's homemade Italian food specialties is their thing.
That's a shame.
No, I don't think so. It's, they're just, they're out of Chickasha, and they moved up here. They're going to have it open very quick.
I understand they've had one in the past elsewhere and-
I don't know.
And, yeah. Exciting, yeah.
Item 18 is German.
So who?
Sir.
All right, thank you both. Would you call for the vote, please? No discussions allowed.
Jason, Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming.